Okay. Let's start the regular meeting for better of agenda, please, or sorry, roll call, please.
Cool, Skier, Over. Marsh. Melix.
He will be.
Eely. Robert. Hardy.
He will be.
Phil.
He will be.
And here.
Student.
We had a student rest.
Uh, Burdley, there, McIntyre, here, Mallard.
The best that I can do.
I'm sorry, we got an introduction, we're new. Oh, we'll come up to that, okay.
We.
Okay, sorry.
Now, we can do that.
Sure, we'll, we'll, we'll do it when you add a point, so.
Okay.
Alright, so moving right on along the action on the minutes from the regular meeting, January. Can we see, we have someone move the minutes, please?
On you.
Karen, I. Well, I'm pissed off. I am here. Move Robert and support him, wait. Any changes?
So who moved in?
Sorry, move Robert, support him. Any changes, corrections? They not all favor of the minutes as opposed to say, I.
I.
Close. None minutes are approved. Moving right along, the agenda, can you have someone move the agenda, please?
The most.
Alright. Will Keely support us? Any changes to the agenda? They not all favor of the agenda as opposed to say, I. Alright. Close. None, okay.
Let's find out what are you guys good. What I.
Oh, okay, sorry. That's right.
I mean, normally, I'd be all four going fast, but we're.
Okay, that's true. Okay. Yeah, check that is approved. Alright, public hearing, we have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. So pre-ring citizen participation, we have none of that either. Um, moving along with reports, well, we are presenting through that. Um, I've nothing to report tonight. So we'll go to any planning commissioner, right, on us? If anyone wants to share, well, by the way, commissioners, yeah.
Uh, I know the. The division control or public hearing comes up this month.
The twenty seven.
That's right, which, interesting. Have you had much feedback from that about that? Michelle, yeah?
No, there, there, there's been some questions. Um, at council about like call the stats. Should they be located in the old village area or discouraged? And the comments that, that staff have provided back is. If there's something that you don't like. Let staff know. Tell us what it is you are concerned about. If there's a different direction you'd like to go, so that I can go back to planning commission and, and they can address it. They said the public hearing and we'll see where this goes. They should be also, um, taking out the zoning ordinance. Next week, Monday, so. And I think.
Now, did they set a public hearing?
They don't have to do a public hearing in a zoning, just the subdivision.
Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, um, thank you. Alright, anything else from commissioners or council, our council, right?
Um, yeah, I guess a couple of things for me. We have started our goal setting sessions for the year, so we have them on Saturday, we'll have another one in March. Um, this week, we did a lot of talking about. Succession planning of the various people on staff who are eligible for retirement or. Looking toward retirements. And we talked a lot about roads, actually. Um, which I thought was interesting, now that we got Dan on council.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we talked about hitting the water tower. And we're gonna have another, we, we did have, we were joined by a. Member of the senior center board who was there the whole time, uh, Ron Miller. And he saved the whole time and at the end asked us, you know. About the senior center, we said, well, that's definitely on our list of things and we'll talk about it in March. So, you know, we just got started, we're not done. Then the regular council meetings, we're going full speed ahead of the fire station, trying to figure out what we're doing there. Now that we have citizen approved money and it's time to make some decisions. Whether they're difficult or not, we have to do it and we have to look forward, so that's exciting for my perspective, anyway. I'm not sure, I, I'm the kind of person who just likes to get stuff done, so I'm excited to get that done. Um, and then, last thing is, we did end up reversing our decision to name first street park. Paul Peasance Park. Um, the meeting after we approved that, his son, one of his sons attended and. Was very unhappy with the decision and I was on, I was on the prevailing side of that motion. I brought it forth again for reconsideration, because I was under the impression that his family had been consulted and were. In agreement with the idea, so. Because I realized that wasn't the pace, I said, let's reconsider this, and we did. It's been reversed and we're now looking at different ways to honor Paul with the consultation of his family.
Great, thank you. Full update there, any questions?
She's near your fire station.
That on the list. I mean, there's things we can do after Paul was so long.
Are you guys gonna do the fire station in regular sessions or are you gonna break out, do you think, in like, like special meetings to address concerns for the fire station?
Um, I'm not entirely sure. Right now, we're sort of taking it as it comes, but we are really focusing on the timeline of. You know, bonding and how long we have to use the money that we have and. Construction timelines and all those things, so it's more, more looking at timelines rather than meetings, I guess.
Yeah, you're right, just playing, I guess that makes sense.
Yeah, so we'll do what we have to do, because we have to get done. Um, but right now, we've only been talking about it in regular meetings so far.
Very interesting. Thank you. Uh, see any committee reports? I don't know, did we have a CD in the last one? Okay. Um. So I guess we're voting, Michelle, for your new vote report.
Um, so, the, uh, inner packet, you have a couple of things. Uh, we've got the, well, let me step back. Thirty five, thirty forty five for us, we maybe has enough again with common sale. They reviewed some minor revisions to the concept plan and scale and asking perspectives. And, excuse me, um, they have the market study now. Um, we didn't get to the performance, so that's something that's being, uh, looked at for this week, probably Thursday or Friday. I'm still waiting to confirm that date. Um, but as a, as a way of trying to make sure that you guys are kept in the loop. With the discussions, especially as it pertains to the concept plan. Um, that's in your packet, um, so that you can see what it looks like. Um, it gives you a whole breakdown of the unit, it's hard game, a layout, et cetera. Um, Chuck and Karen have been coming to those meetings and providing their feedback as a perspective of the planning commission. Um, but if you've got any thoughts on that you want to share with me, please email me and let me know. Um, because it only goes to help, um, with how everything, um, moves forward. And ultimately, when it comes to you, um, it, I think everyone would agree it would be better if we don't have, uh. A queue and cry on the planning vision saying, oh, no, don't want that one at all. Um, know it now as opposed to dealing with it later. You've also got a concept plan in your, um, in your packet for the pre-application meeting. That we had with Mike Penn and Nav Development for the parcels on Grand Street that sit between Brandview and the cemetery. Um, he's looking at a, at a table, product, apartments, um. The, um, excuse me, seventy six units, appropriate size and square footages. Um, they remembered bike rental, the most important thing to some people, or bike, um, parking. Um, it, 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 it's kind of reminiscent of Millennium Place in that. Um, you go under, like a tunnel through the, the building to get to the back, you know, it's left the view of the parking. Excuse me, uh, providing five on-street parking, um, except for what they're proposing. Um. It, 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 they got, um, little. They got fairly positive reviews coming out of the pre-application meeting. But again, if there's anything that you see that sticks out to you that you think we need to know and let the developer know, please, uh, let, let me know. Um, we also had anyone in Maine Street on, um, on Friday. We had a lot of, of different, um, development or potential development activity that we haven't had in a little bit. Um, excuse me. Um, eighty one eighty is the, is the location on the other side of the creek. It was, um. It's still the formal allocation for the brewery, but that's kind of, um, on hold and may end up getting relocated to thirty twenty five Broad Street. That's a conversation that the owners are currently having, but, uh, they found, uh, did. Uh, is working with K L A Development on a potential sale of the property. And, um, they're looking at two buildings, nine units each, this is a high-end development, um, oriented toward the creek. They would have to bring the water from that pine in order to serve the site. Obviously, the density is a problem because the site can handle it. They park the majority of the parking for each building on the first floor. And there's a little bit of, of circus parking, um, that more than covered, but, um. It was fairly well received, there were some minor thoughts as to how it could be improved. Kyle did a real good job with an email, he couldn't participate or he couldn't attend as one of the pre-application committee members. But he provided a very detailed email, which I thought I included in here. Um, I think I did it, I think.
I see it.
I didn't, so I would make sure you get a copy of that. Um, focusing a lot on thoughts for improving, um, architectural design layout. Um, even suggesting that potentially a third building, um, could be considered. So, um, they'll go back, go recruit and we'll see if they decide to, um, move forward with this. A lot of it will depend on what they negotiated as an agreement with the owner, if they give to that. Um, that will have to be done before they come in front of us, so. Um, stay tuned. Uh, subject again, zoning ordinance is, um, this month by city council. Uh, let's see, probably stepping out of redevelopment ready in communities, it's no longer a requirement, that's us. Avenue DC and Nishtha Monies, um, so we'll see where that goes. Um. I'm sure there's something else I was supposed to talk about that came to mind, but you know, this.
Any questions?
Can I just add to that, Michelle, that we did talk about, um, that development at our goal setting on Saturday?
Which one?
The Old Mill Creek. Oh, okay, yeah. Oh, great. So we did talk about that and, you know, we talked a lot about what would the community, um.
Recognize.
Yes, and we talked a lot about the water and sewer and the fact that Corbin Farms is now. Part of that system in some way. And so how to loop that, the walk, you know, just how to, how to make that work. And so again, that's another place where Dan was really valuable with his knowledge and it's good to have him on board for those discussions. We also talked about Sloan Kingsley. A little bit, and I don't know if that's what you were thinking of that you forgot, but.
I don't have any.
So we had all, we have, you know, discussions about that too, there's a new, sorry, I forgot, there's a new proposal. Um. That we're looking at, but again, it's, we're. There's nothing happening right now, we're still trying to decide whether or not it's even worth discussing, because, you know, it's not. Under our jurisdiction, jurisdiction, right? So it's like there are different entities, there's the developer, there's us and there's SIO. And so we're sort of just looking at that and, um. Seeing what makes sense, so, but it's still there, it's still on the radar.
It's been in there.
I know. What we, what we actually looked at this week was very different from what we've looked at in the past. Um, SIO has come in and said that they really want to focus on land preservation. And so it's just a very small area for development that is directly adjacent to Dexter Crossing and then a lot of preserved land. On the other side and no cut through to Baker, but again. It's, we're not necessarily going anywhere with it.
Right.
It's just, that's the latest thing we're looking at.
Yeah, and that's got a long, anything happens with.
Yeah.
Got a long, long road to, to, jurisdictional boundaries and all that kind of stuff. Interesting. Wow, okay. Thank you, um, anything else for Michelle or questions for Michelle, I guess? Um, great. Um, okay, citizens wishing to address the commission?
There's none in the audience.
None behind that, and I don't see any hands raised, correct?
Wait, there's somebody on the phone wanting to get in.
Virtual. It's just an iPhone.
Uh, anybody online wish to address planning mission?
No answers, okay. Moving right on, whole business, we have no, whole business tonight, so we're at the new business, the CIP. The most interesting of everything we do.
Oh, sorry.
I just gave a great intro to the CIP.
So. I think you guys have got a table summarizing the updates we're planning to make for this year's CIP. Uh, we're in the process of, well, transferred everything from last year's CIP into our software. And we're in the process of using that to generate. The, the new one, so, um. I don't know if anyone has any questions, um, about any of the projects specifically. Or comments that you'd like to make sure get incorporated in the, in the document?
So everything we have here, just the, the changes and obviously, as we go through the next meeting, we have the larger, the comprehensive package. So I, I have one question, comment, is on, uh, of course, it'd be the Baker Road Crosswalk at Forest. Um, on the, what's it, well, page fifty four, but, um. So I noticed, and I can't mention it here as well, but I remember Baker being re, uh, on the schedule to be redone.
Yes.
So I think, is this, I mean, yeah, I see that we've got it kind of lined up here, so you're well aware of that, but does that? Is the streetscape, because there's also the, the Baker Road streetscape that I think was lined up. Yeah, Baker Road Street, it's gate enhancements to twenty twenty eight, it says, but I mean, wouldn't that? And I know there's money, I know money's a real world concern, but my concern is that once we, you know, now is the.
I mean, I get exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
My suggestion would be is that if the planning commission has. Um. A, a collective desire that city council address this. Um, it would be something that we should take back to goal setting to talk about. Um, because at this particular point, the staff has had conversations with, um, with city management. And it's not budgeted for any of that, because we don't have the money for it. So, um, if this is something that we need. To, to, to look at, that would be, that would be the suggestion I'd make.
Okay, so I think, um, although we have kind of a small commission here today, but, um. Well, I don't know, I mean, other thoughts on, from others on this?
I mean, it doesn't hurt for me to take, I mean, if it's something that we need to talk about, we need to talk about.
Maybe for the other, our other planning commissioners, I, I just, because again, one of the things that it, it gets, like, when my role was rebuild grand, grand, it. What got me a little bit, because it was like the rope, I know things have to go on sequence and that went so fast that I think we didn't take a step back to. Look at a better way of doing the roads. And I'm worried about that with Baker too, so I really want to stress that, because now's the time. Then I did my little informal survey of la- last Saturday, when I was walking back on one side, I actually saw a mayor walking on the other side. And there's twenty two people I saw walking on the best side on the, so you want the west side, I guess, of Baker Road. Just in the stretch that I got from the Wellness Center to, to, um, to Grand Street or Mike Street. Um, so it's extremely well-used stretch that sidewalk in between Baker and while brand really into where the wellness, or the trail comes out by Wellness Center. And the sidewalk's really close, so I think it's very well-used, this is, should be a key focus. I really want to stress, we've done yet a report on it, and this is our other main corner, I think, and it looks different.
Yes.
I know, sir, I mean, it, it, it's absolutely horrible.
Very gross.
It's scary to.
Is I can also bring it up to the DDA, because perhaps the DDA would. Um, as part of the strategic plan I think that they're doing, maybe in forward that, um. It may get incorporated. You know, I don't know that it will happen at the same time that the road gets done, but at least that's another.
Exactly. You know, and I, I get it, all this kind of.
But the other thing is, Matt, you brought up that intersection a number of times. That one. And we, we've had citizens bring us, I mean, I. We shouldn't ignore it, because we've had citizens bring us things that we've talked about, we've approved money to look at, we've changed things. So there's no reason why we shouldn't consider that as well. So, I mean, I'll write it down, but send me an email, let's, let's get it, let's get it on.
Because I think, again, is we're bringing more and more people to those, lots of people come through, that Baker is a huge part.
Well, and we just, it was a lot of story, which I know you were very concerned about, so.
Exactly, but, no, that's, that's a good point, which by the way, the building was great, they've done everything, but, exactly, so thank you. Um, alright, so that was just my comment on, um, maybe, yeah, anything else, anybody else, and then change? These are kind of, again, some of the items that have changed, we'll get to see the, uh, all the board details at the next meeting or two. But any other initial comments? Anything else that you guys want to point out for this, then, anything else new and exciting? Nothing? Okay, well, then I guess. Um. Well, we don't really have a, we don't have a, um, action on that one, so I guess we can move along. Michelle, is there anything else you want to point out for the CIP for now, or are we good?
Good, that's it.
Alright, we're good, then we can move on to any news.
Um, before we get to the.
Okay.
I forgot.
Oh, yes.
I'm a reporter second here. This is Georgia. Georgia, it's the planning commission.
Nice to meet you. Nathan. Oh, who boards?
Thank you.
Dan will give you all the scoop on what I was.
She's also sent her enough to meet her.
Oh, okay, we were much better than that. But way more than, than. Okay, thank, thank you for remembering that, Michelle. Um, okay, now signs. Science and technology.
So, bicentennial celebration, planning is underway. Um, the committee that is basically doing this, um. Has, uh, has let us know that they'd like to put a digital flag. In the downtown somewhere, somewhere that people can see it. Um, so that people got an understanding of when this bicentennial will occur.
Yeah, countdown.
Hopefully, countdown to Christmas.
Well.
Okay, we've got constitutional principles. Um, First Amendment, and. You can't, uh, abridge the freedom of speech. There are two types of speech we deal with in zoning, um, commercial, non-commercial, and the signage that. Uh, gets used with those two, um, are protected speech, so, um. We have to figure out. How do we do that and remain content neutral? Because what used to happen is ordinances would say, um, you can't have any moving or electronic signs. Except for time, temperature, et cetera. Um, the, the. Two latest, um, uh, Supreme Court decisions, uh, made it very clear. If you have to read the sign to regulate it, you can't do that. So, um, it's, it's either, in, in some ways, it's an all or nothing. But it's making, it's taken us through the, uh, the zoning ordinance update. You can regulate based on a zoning district, based on a specific land use. Um, it's very narrow, very careful. Um. The, um. This is just a discussion tonight, there's no action required, um. And I really believe that this is something we're going to. Actively dig into one way or the other. Um, a thorough review of some of the references that I provided for you would be in order. Um, I didn't print them out, because. Did everything? Or? Um. Some of them are extremely long, different communities do different things, but. It, it's, it's the, what you're going to be coming up against is the, um. This is something that's, it's only gonna happen for a little bit, and there's a little romance to it, because it's the bicentennial. But the reality is, is it has to be applied consistently across the board. So, um. What thoughts do you all have? How far do you want to dig into this?
Yeah.
The commercial, non-commercial, sort of leans out, and yet there's like, you know, discussion of this in some of these articles, kind of a public service. Aspect, that is, it's not really quite commercial, and it's, it's certainly not, we mentioned. And the fact is. The, the public service announcement catch, potentially could be treated differently. Um, than, you know, neon lights flashing, so we have neon lights. Open signs, we don't regulate open signs, other than that we can't flash. Um, but you bring up something that I hadn't thought about, it might be something that we should talk more on. Um. And there may be a very fine line in dealing with that. There are certain types of governmental signs that are exempt, so, um. Signage in the road right away, that is, um, no parking, speed limit, et cetera. Um. I'm not sure that it's on solid footing that we said this was a governmental information sign. Who wants to put up exactly the DDA? You know, the bicentennial committee, which is part of arts, culture and heritage. So government.
Yeah, which is a, no, it's a nonprofit, so.
Uh, and the nonprofit is that, if that's non-commercial.
Exactly.
Speech, we can't, we can't say that if it's nonprofit, they can have a sign, but a commercial can, so. But that's not, I mean, I know, I know we would never want to put up a sign as a planning commission, but aren't we considered a government entity for not involved?
Mm-hmm.
So that's, based on the, what's it, arts, you know, arts, culture, and, uh, art isn't bad, and aren't they comparable to what we are?
Yes.
Um, yeah, in some ways, yes, so it seems to me, seriously, there's a loophole here, and Jim or here, he would.
We've already talked about bicentennial at. Um, council. So, and councils express some support for bicentennial.
Right.
So could council do something? Would that make it more? Would make it more complicated?
How about if we do this, um, uh, we'll bring this back next month for more discussion, but I'll also have the city attorney.
Yeah, that would be.
Participate, um, and then you've got, you've got legal counsel, um, weighing in on some of the nuanced questions. And where those gray areas are that, that we may want to play in and where we may not want to play. Way in and some of the nuanced questions and where those gray areas are that that we may want to play in and where we may not want to play.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because it could be fun, but.
Yes, and it's it, this is an event the city's putting on.
Right, exactly.
You're gonna do this sign, but you're gonna tell. Another.
Right, and it's not official, like. Yeah, I can see where that gets kind of slippery. Right, it's a festival, it's an event, that's not a government.
Well, it it's an event that the city is planning, the city's Arts Culture Heritage Community has a subcommittee called the bicentennial. So it's made up of interested residents, but. This is planning, so it's very.
When did we get to this spot where we can't just like hang a sign in the gazebo that says seven days left?
As long as it doesn't move, city could do a temporary banner sign. And just change.
It does, it calls attention to our, yeah, we're gonna mark our bicentennial vision. Yeah, exactly.
It's the digital aspect.
That gets us in trouble. And I think we beat that. I think that if we're going for whimsy and we're going for history, it shouldn't be digital. Like two hundred years ago, we didn't have that.
That's true.
Josh, who's the liaison to Arts Culture and Heritage, the suggestion of maybe just doing the banner sign.
Somebody can volunteer each day, we each get assigned a couple of days a year.
Cause I like limb closes.
It's not written. If it if it was really just days and hours and we had the minutes and the seconds, it's not gonna linger. And that might not be considered, that could be considered, and really. It's a digital sign and our ordinance doesn't block.
Only we look at the sign ordinance. We've got to open that back up again, Michelle.
Karen, you should have been a lawyer, go to heritage.
So I see there's a lot of good sign content here you guys have. Are we gonna? Are we talking all about signs today or just? Are we gonna have a broader sign discussion today?
No, this is just about just this one up. And I will say, I thought the the sign regulation, I think that was done for St. St. Louis of his fault. Informative, so if you've got a chance, look that over.
It's pretty good. Is there? Any, okay, I know you were working with those people downtown that have the electronics sign in their window.
Yeah, we're working through that.
Yeah, because it it does look very officially Dexter.
So. The person who has created that sign, the business didn't, they hired somebody to do it. Has has brought into the mix that that digital display provides the same. Same level of. In that information, but it creates, it allows a function. Because he cited the the A T M machine and its digital display. And. What he's, what the point he's trying to make is that this kiosk on the window. For a real estate office could do the same thing. But as you can imagine, if you can do it for the real estate, then why couldn't you do it for any other business? An A T M is very specific to the banking functions, it's accessory to the banking function. And we start getting into, talk about gray areas, so we're gonna have a conversation in the evening.
Okay, so I think that that's kind of my one concern is that slippery slope, then you're gonna have menus for every restaurant, you're gonna have everything people sell. And it's a touchscreen and that is a very slippery slope.
I can tell that it's not the same thing, but I will.
Agree, and I think if it, we should be also. I think if that is, so do you know what?
Next to the barber shop in the Commerce Building. There's between that and on the park, there's a new real estate office that's gone in. And they put what initially was was looked like a phone screen.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's an interactive display that people can look up there, look up above property.
From the street. Yeah, this is very different from anything we have.
But you can see it, and it also now it says like, City of Dexter Community Information. It makes it look like it's inefficient, it has the heavy logo on it, I think, of the city. It it looks like it, but but again, so it was, it's, so like in real estate, but my point, right, it could be a menu next, it could be. You know, a jewelry selection, whatever it may be, that gets really, because we know the sign technology, so I think if that, if that is.
Like anybody wants to stand out, like, oh, we do that here.
I guess, but you're right, you know, limited value, but I think you should look into that, that's. If that's a meatball they've exploited, I think we should revise that.
Using that A T M that looks like the fence is so different, isn't it kind of like got the neon lighting around it, I mean, how?
I don't like the A T Ms either, but that's.
And it is vague, and I don't think searching on, you know, for partners or browsing.
That's like a function of the bank.
An A T M also provides an immediate public service, right?
And there are banks that are just.
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, and yeah, so that was, all right, Michelle, thank you for that update. So that's really, all right, so proposed business for March already, all right, Cap, set all the hearing, I don't think you're ready to set. All right, and then we may have some signs up to chew on again, it sounds like, are any of these site plans you think will be ready? Citizens wishing to address the commission? Okay, who's gonna be behind the podium? Okay, all right. You have lots of journalists. Go brothers for March, all favor journalists, say aye.